Thank you all very much. It is 9:13 PM and we call the meeting back to order. We are back at Board Action, Item B, Resolution to Authorize Layoff of Staff. If possible, could we have Attorney Comesa and Marius come to the podium and give us some explanations so we can know exactly what we're dealing with? So, the question, I'm sorry. Did you want to say something, Trustee Muhammad, very briefly?
Yeah. So, I just wanted to stress, so honestly, I was kind of, I wasn't prepared, especially with having to make a decision about Ms. Parks tonight. But I did want to stress that, you know, I greatly appreciate Ms. Parks. You know, we've worked, especially when I was the Board President, we worked very closely together. Huge supporter, huge advocate, and I know that you love this district. So, you know, I just wanted to clarify, my vote was primarily not to stop the process, but not, it is not a vote against you as the superintendent, so.
Thank you, Trustee Muhammad. Sorry, Attorney Comesa, there was a question that I think some board members had and the community had, and if, Marius, I can never pronounce your last name, so I apologize. If the two of you could help to explain, what happens if we do not approve the layoffs tonight in relation to the contracts for the different bargaining units?
So, some of the collective bargaining agreements have timeframes in them.
Okay.
And if notice of layoff is not met, that you can't lay those employees off. Certified, certificated staff, you have until, I think the policy and the regulations say before the end of the school year, before the prior, the start of the other year. I think some of the discussion was to, if there are layoffs, to give as much notice as possible to employees.
Okay.
And the resolution that you have in your packet simply, if, should the Board ratify it, delegates to the superintendent and her administrative staff the right to implement the layoffs pursuant to the collective bargaining agreements that are applicable and the Board policy and regulations for certificated staff.
Okay.
And so, that's the legal point of view. Financial, Marius can, if you want to address.
Excuse me?
Question for Marius.
Trustee Kehar.
Just want a quick clarification. When you said our bargain groups, are they the same date for all the groups or are the groups different dates?
I think they're different dates. Shante Langford from HR knows the dates better than I do, if you.
I'd like to know what the dates are.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Langford, please help clarify Trustee Kehar's question.
So, as Attorney Comesa stated, there are different dates for each bargaining group. I can, are you asking specifically what each one?
I definitely am.
Okay. So ASCSA, which are supervisors, they have a 90-day provision of notice. Paraprofessionals have a two-week prior to the end of the school year notice. Office professionals have a 15-day prior to the school, end of the school year notice. And Mr. Comesa just stated that quad A and teachers have a responsibility to know before the end of the school year. I think that covered everyone.
So, just, just as a further clarification, just so that we're clear, I think we had some discussion last week about contractual dates being the end of March and amended April. Can you clarify, because those actually didn't name specific months, but actually dates prior to the end of the school year. So, can I get a clarification on when we would have to make the official notification to these specific groups?
So, that's the question I was just answering. So, what we talked about last week was just dates that we would like to let staff know so that they have some time to apply at other districts and things of that nature.
Yeah, thank you. Trustee Gaynor.
Yeah, I'd like, Mr. Demetrio, we had this discussion about why do the resolution now and not wait till there's engagement with the staff so we could have their input? If you could respond, please.
Thank you, Trustee Gaynor. As was mentioned, the number one reason is you want to let people know as soon as possible. But there are some procedural reasons as well. Another reason is that we received a letter from the Treasury Department, which we had to provide them with a plan how we get out of the situationary by March 15th. We were able to get an extension till April 15th. I don't think we'll be able to get another extension. So, in order for us to provide a plan, we have to make some decisions. A third reason is that in June, early June, we need to borrow money in order for us to pay for our expenses. So, in order for us to borrow money in early June, you have to work, work your way back because it takes some time in order to complete the process. And so, that, that decision is to be made approximately April 17th. And I'll just say a few things about borrowing money for school districts. The school districts, when they borrow money, is tax-exempt money, so the interest is, is lower than, but you got to, once you borrow the money, you got to make sure you spend all the money at some point. And you have 372 days to, that, that you can extend the loan only up to 372 days. So, we can't just decide willy-nilly how much we can borrow. We have to be pretty exact, how much money we borrow because we got to make sure we spend that money and then we got to make sure we have enough to, to, to pay for our expenses, basically.
Okay.
I, I think those are the reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Demetrio.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I see Trustee Muhammad, I see Trustee Gaynor have questions. Trustee, Trustee Muhammad.
Yeah, so you said the plan, you said, is it April 17th or 15th?
The, the plan to the Department of Treasury is due on April 15th.
Okay. And you said April 17th, what is that?
April 17th is basically working our way back from, from early June in order to basically issue a state aid note that we will basically be borrowing money against the state.
Okay. And just, it's a plan, but not necessarily action. Is that what, I just wanted to clarify, is it a plan for action or is it we have to take action by this day, by April 15th?
No, I have to submit, not me, the school district.
Yeah.
Has to submit a plan to the Department of Treasury, a financial plan, how we're going to be back over 5% in fund balance.
So, if I can jump in, I think what the question is, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the question is, given the 90-day notice requirement, we have certain people in our units that have to know or have notice of the, of potential layoffs by March 30th.
That is correct.
And so, this is our last meeting prior to March 30th unless we're coming in over spring break. And so, and so, and having our staff come in and paying them overtime and all those other things to accomplish it. So, if we're going to make a decision on those bargaining units, that has to be done tonight.
Yes.
That's the question.
I was, well, I was trying to clarify that and then the plan, because you're going to give notice and then we're going to come together and, that's what I was trying to clarify, the plan.
So, correct me.
For everyone to understand that.
So, the plan that, that, that Mr. Demetrio is referring to is the financial plan.
Yeah.
That's required by the state, which will likely look different than the action plan that we are getting input from staff and families and students and community to develop over what things we will reduce in our operating budget. So, they're two separate plans.
So, the only thing that's on the agenda for tonight is whether or not we are approving the interim superintendent sending out the notices of, of potential layoffs or layoffs. The plan for who actually is going to, going to be and what's going to actually happen is still ongoing, is my understanding, trying to find those savings. And so, there, it will be layoffs with the possibility of recall, depending on where we find savings and how many savings. So, this is just opening the door to that discussion, is my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
No, that's correct.
Trustee Gaynor.
Yeah, I wouldn't say just, these are really important decisions, but I also understand that these notices have to be given or else we cannot make the changes for the beginning of the contract year. There is some question about timing and I'm, I've, my understanding has been refined in the last 20 minutes, so I appreciate that. And I know the budget isn't the centerpiece of this, but it does form the basis of this decision. I stand accused of, I'm admitting to this, to be the trustee that puts the question out on Facebook. I heard the $25 million mark last week and I've literally been spending day and night trying to make sense of that. And when I came up with a different figure, I asked for help. I need help figuring this. I had a chance to, I mean, I asked for and got to sit down with Ms. Parks and Mr. Demetrio today and got the data. And, you know, based on assumptions of revenue from the state, enrollment, insurance increases, retirement costs, changes from what it's been, $25 million is, is conservative, which is what he has to do to protect the district. By, my number of 20 million was based on other assumptions that would maybe get us through next year and then rapidly aim us toward default again. But we don't have to go into all of that budget. I do think notices for layoffs are needed. The timing is questionable, but yeah, I don't think that's a big difference. We voted to negotiate with Ms. Parks for a contract, I believe. She has the integrity to work with everybody, everybody, to try to make the best decisions possible. I am lyric, we're giving her a blank check, right? If we pass this resolution, whatever layoff notices she chooses to give, if we pass it as it's written, we've given her that authority, which is a really big thing, I understand. I, I don't know, I would love to refine that, I don't know how to, just don't, and so don't give her the authority she needs. You know, and the question is, do we have trust in her and the staff and doing the engagement and getting the best input on behalf of staff and students?
Thank you, Trustee Gaynor. Trustee DePree.
I just, I have a few questions about kind of how the, the school year works, because I'm looking at our meeting dates and I'm thinking about the deadlines that we have to meet. And I know we have a meeting scheduled on April 3rd, which would have been the finalist interviews, but I'm wondering if we waited to April 3rd, which gives people time to talk to us, how would that affect us meeting the deadline to notify people? Because I know that the last day for students, it looks like it's June 13th, but I don't know, like, if teachers come in after that or, like, how would that work?
So, you would have, one group that I mentioned has a 90-day notice, that's the ASCSA. So, if we're not able to give them their notices by March 30th, then we won't be able to do anything with that group. So, just want to put that out there. As far as teachers and administrators go, the administrative regulation states that they have to be notified prior to the end of the school year. So, you would have till, I think you just said, June 13th or June 12th is the last day before school is out.
I know this sounds crazy because I'm trying to figure out, is there a way to separate the two, right?
Yes.
That's what I'm doing. I'm sorry, to separate.
Well, because we have to give, you said the ASC.
I wrote this down.
ASCSA, yes.
So, they need 90 days.
Yes.
But teachers could have more time than that. So, is there a way to separate that so we vote on the mandatory 90-day notification and then give more times for teachers so we can actually talk to people?
So, I know as far as changing the resolution, I would let Attorney Comesa talk about that, but yes, there is a way to notify people at different times.
Roger, thank you.
Trustee Muhammad.
Yeah, and I echo what Trustee DePree said, if there's any way to, you know, look at all these, the timeline and maybe make it more of a staggered approach where it's like, okay, well, the 90 days, this is what we need to approve. I just, I, I mean, I would feel more comfortable with that, but again, it would have to be an amended, we would have to amend this resolution. Because I do want, I think it is important for the stakeholders and especially the, the teachers and staff provide input before, and, and give you more data before making those decisions.
So, I don't know if it's possible, but Ms. Ozenski, it sounds like we are talking about.
Question.
I'm sorry, before I ask that question, let me, let me have Trustee Do, Trustee Baskett.
Thank you, President Feaster. I guess I don't understand how delaying this would be helpful when all of the positions are intertwined, are they not? I mean, the, Ms. Langford, could you please clarify again, who is part of the first group, the 90-day? I think I have it, but I'd rather you do it.
Yes, ASCSA, which are various supervisors and coordinators within the district, some rec and ed staff, some special ed staff, as well as some individuals in teaching and learning.
So, again, to have a comprehensive plan, we have to be mindful of everybody who's there and say, I won't even take, I won't even put this out, because people will think that there was a plan and it's intentional and it's not. But again, they're moving pieces and all of the players. So, to take action on one player, set of players without understanding the roles of the other, it just seems a little disjointed. And again, Ms. Parks, you can speak for yourself, but I would think it would be harder to plan that way versus doing it as we are proposing tonight, so.
It would just depend on what the ultimate set of recommendations are when we get to, to the plan.
Right, but this would limit you in terms of the final outcome. I guess I'm confused how this would help.
I, I don't think it, if I, I, I don't think it changes her ability to, to do her, her task. It just focuses on the ASCSA on tonight's meeting and then we would have to come back before the next deadline to give the approval for the next group or to discuss the approval for the next group. I don't think it limits her ability to send out notices.
Yeah, that's correct, because if, if there are staff who are a part of some of the recommendations in the action plan, then we would come back with another resolution in order to be able to actualize those recommendations.
Well, I guess the question is, do we want to keep coming back?
I'm willing to do it.
Trustee Muhammad and then Trustee Gaynor.
I mean, I, I, my, my view of this, especially because this is, you know, dealing with people's livelihood, is for us to just take, I know, this is one thing we cannot feel, and I know we're not rushing, I know that, you know, Ms. Parks, you're going to have a great plan, you have a strategy, but I still feel like this is the time that we just take a step back and especially those that within the 90 days should get. You know, obviously, we have to tell them before March 30th, but again, if it doesn't limit your, you know, your ability to implement some of these, these decisions.
Trustee Gaynor, I'm going to go next, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the question, and I guess, I guess it's for Ms. Parks. If we do it piece by piece based on the required dates, does that mesh with Ms. Parks or the administration's plan to give layoffs? Is there, is there a reason to do it in a certain logical order or political or practical order that would be a different order than these dates?
Um.
But, yeah, I mean, I, you know, all these considerations, are, are we giving a false promise by putting off notice for three weeks when we're going to do it anyway? I mean, and, you know, it's, it's, it's good politically here, but does it make a difference? These are just the questions.
Yeah.
That I'm tossing through because I did not know that we had these variable dates until people spoke up.
So, it would not necessarily alter what the ultimate recommendations of the plan might be. However, it would alter the time people have to pursue other employment. It would potentially alter the, the speed with which we make some of the decisions and be able to share that with our community and our, our staff, because we wouldn't share information with, about staff without informing them first and them not finding out it in, in, in a public meeting, right? So, it might slow down some of that component of it, but I think ultimately, the, the recommendations we will still be able to make through the action planning process. It just would slow down a little bit the notice and people's opportunity to find additional other employment.
Trustee Muhammad and, no, Trustee Schmidt and then Trustee Muhammad.
Mr. Demetrius, what, do you, what do you see as the disadvantage for us spacing it out, waiting with one group later? Tell me from your perspective, because we're dealing with the Department of Treasury is an issue. I mean, tell me.
Like I mentioned, we have to put a plan together and it has to be submitted to the state by April 15th. If, if we wait, I'm not sure how, how far we can wait, because if we don't have the, the leeway and we, we can't put a plan and not be able to execute it.
So, let me ask you about the plan.
And then, like I mentioned also, borrowing money, which we do need to borrow money, and having to know how much we need to borrow, I, I don't know how I'm going to know how much I need to borrow for next year if we don't have a plan. So, that's as simple as I can make it.
Yeah, so, so in order to do this plan, you are going to need to know how many staff would be laid off so that you know how many of those salaries you wouldn't have to pay and what our remaining expenditure would be. You wouldn't have to know the names of the people, you just need to know X amount in this, X amount in this, so that we know where we stand in this plan. It sounds like there's another plan that gives more specifics.
Yeah.
If I'm wrong, correct me, I'm just trying to.
It was related to Trustee Muhammad's question a few minutes ago, there are two, you know, there are two plans, there's the, the plan for the reductions and then there's the financial plan that has to be submitted for Treasury. Our plan doesn't have to be submitted for Treasury, it, it's our internal plan, but Mr. Demetrio's plan is the financial plan that's required for corrective action.
But in order for him to get there, you need to do your work.
Our action plan needs to kind of, needs to be able to have some shape.
Yeah. Okay. And my only other comment would be, it's important to me, I've been ping slipped a lot of times during my career, and I want to know as soon as I can, because I need to make some moves. So, I'm just thinking, however we do this, our staff deserves to know as soon as possible so that they can look at other options.
Trustee Muhammad and then Trustee Kehar.
So, one thing, and yeah, of course, I mean, one thing we, I could maybe suggest is that obviously we have a plan that has to be submitted by, a financial plan by April 15th. If we can have a study session before, and I know this has been brought up before, prior to that, so obviously the 90-day, the employees at groups that we need to notify before March 30th, we would have to make, we can authorize that, make that decision. But for all the other groups, I would propose of having a study session and making a decision based on this financial plan and potentially some initial plan before sending out any other layoff notices. Because I, I want to think about, I mean, I want to hear from the community, the stakeholders. I think that's crucial, I think you're already doing that. I also want to think outside the box too, like, are there ways where we can work together with the city, collaborate, look at kind of the lands that we have and see if that's an opportunity for us to, like, help with affordable housing? Like, there's so many things that we could try to do, but I know, you know, and I, and I've talked to some of the city council members about this, but, you know, just thinking about outside the box, but I'm not sure if that's going to be something in the plan. I'm assuming, I'm assuming it's not just people, there are going to be other things in the plan.
So, in the plan by April 15th, you mean?
Well, no, well, I mean, yeah, I know it's going to take time to think about these things. I don't know, I'm just trying to think of other alternatives, to be honest, and just being able to be clear and understanding what they are.
Trustee Kehar, Trustee DePree, and then Trustee Schmidt.
Yeah, just to share a couple of thoughts, I mean, I would be in favor of amending tonight's resolution to only include that first group within the 90 days. You know, I hear both sides of the argument where, of course, we want to notify employees so they can prepare for, for what's in front of them and the challenges that they're going to have to face. I also think it's important that the community sessions that you talked about coming up on Friday and the facts that are going to go out and all that other information, that everyone kind of has an opportunity to, to hear those and we have a chance to, actually here at the table, to discuss our, our thoughts about it, once we have a little bit more information. And, you know, I think the deciding factor for me, at least today, is our AEA union president came out here and basically said, that's a concern, and that's why everybody's here today to vote generally, if I'm, I don't think I'm mishearing, to not approve the plan. So, for me, I would be in favor of amending this to, just for right now, allowing the layoffs to occur for the ASCSA group so they can be within the 90-day period. And then when we come back April 3rd, we'll be a little bit more informed about what we know. And of course, I recognize that it might give those employees who will get laid off a little bit less time to prepare for their futures. I don't think it's so less time that they wouldn't like to hear a little bit more information. I certainly would like to hear a little bit more about what the interim plan would be before just signing off on all of it. That's just generally how I feel about it.
Trustee, Trustee DePree and then Trustee Schmidt.
I have, like, a bunch more questions because I'm trying to figure this out. So, the mandatory 90 days, we have to do that. Would it be too specific to say for the next group, we can do 60 days? Because that's like, so, a significant amount of time to plan. And then, I'm curious, because, I mean, I don't know the contract by her, like, I read through, are they not allowed to look for jobs? Like, and again, this is just, I can't figure a perfect way to say this, but if I was sitting in the audience, we were having this conversation, I would be like, I'm about to look for a job tomorrow, period. That, that, you know, does it mean that they cannot look for jobs if we don't do this right now?
No, no one's prohibited.
No, not at all.
Yeah.
Not at all, they can, they can most certainly look for jobs. I think we're just stating that people would want to know because they don't, we don't, they don't know who the who is yet, so.
Roger.
Wait, please stop, please stop, point of order. Point of order. Okay, point of order, please.
Thank you. Sorry, did you have something, Ms.?
No, I thought you called me.
No, no, okay. We did, Trustee DePree, and it was Trustee Schmidt, okay, Trustee Baskett, and then back to Trustee Kehar, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm passing, go ahead. So, I just wanted to clarify, I thought the resolution, and I'm reading it here, gives us, gives the superintendent the authority to do it, but it doesn't require her to do X a number of layoffs. So, whereas we could vote tonight to lay off, but we're not obligating her to lay off, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So.
Do you have a question? If you mind. Trustee DePree.
So, it, it sounds like it would still be a bit of uncertainty, because even if we did vote in tonight, nobody would actually know until they get notified.
That's correct, because we. That's correct, because we are not going to know who's going to be impacted or affected until after we have gotten the feedback and input from, from everyone that we've talked about. So yeah, you're, you're correct.
And if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the, the people who are voicing their opinions tonight are voicing their opinions largely against this completely. So, so it's not about a piecemeal here and a piecemeal, completely. They, they are not supportive of this, is my understanding. Trusty Karen Harrow.
You know, I, 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 having been a teacher myself and being part of the MEA affiliate union, I totally understand the impact that it has on teachers and it varies amongst the groups. Generally speaking, I understand what solidarity means. And the idea that they're going to come out here and advocate for their employee group, I totally get that. I actually support that idea 100%. What I am trying to find is that nice balance between what the public and our association group is coming with us and what we've just been told that we basically have to do in order to make the adjustments that we have. And I just don't see why moving it to April 3rd would disrupt any internal plan that we had. In fact, it would give us more time to share some of that. And for us to, what I think has clearly been displayed here, not having enough time to think about some of the decisions that are coming forward. As we say, I just discovered this in 20 or 15 minutes. I just don't think that it's a wise move for us to, to proceed in such heavy decisions without actually having that more information. And I, I don't think it should impact anybody's work, you know, not, not to put, do pressure on anybody, but April 15th is the deadline to, as far as I'm concerned, April 14th is still good. So, so, so I don't see why we can't wait till April 3rd to gain a little bit more information and, and collect the information from the public and then come back and at least share what we do know after we've calculated some of the things that we're going to need to calculate to figure out where we're going to come up with the money. Having said that, I would motion that we amend the resolution so that we only notify that first impacted group with the idea that we would come back on April 3rd and then perhaps notify the other groups.
Is a motion on the table? Support by trustee Dupree, additional discussion, trustee Muhammad.
Just a question for Ms. Parks. Would April 3rd give you enough time to provide more information to the board? Or would you need a little bit more time? I just want to make sure.
By April 3rd, we will have some information gleaned from the survey, from our groups that we're having with students, some of our parent and community groups and staff groups, we will not have had by the 3rd. But we will have some information, yeah.
So is it worth, I mean, I know it's kind of tight, but is it worth to talk about this the following week instead of April 3rd or no? I mean, I'm just trying to see, I'm trying to, because the whole point is to have some data, to be able to talk about it. But I mean, if April 3rd works, it's fine, but it's a question for you.
Yeah, I mean, April 3rd or the following week, I think we'll have, we'll have a good picture of what the priorities of our community are.
Trusty Schmidt and trustee Dupree.
I think that it's a terrible thing to have to lay anybody off. And I think what will happen is that you're kicking the can. And, and I'm not comfortable with watching this because I feel like, this is like, well, you know, let's, let's talk about it next week, let's talk about it next week. When there's a real sense here from the data that we have and the 25 million that we have to make up, and since, what is it, 80, 80% of our budget is staff? I mean, that's, that's what we spend money on is our teachers. They're the, the bulwark of our operation. And this, I don't know, it seems a little gamesmanship here to say, well, we'll just put it off. I, I'm not following this. And I don't want anything to get in the way of you doing your work to get whatever they need at Treasury. That's, and, and so there, I'm, I'm not in favor of that. It just seems like we're just pushing it just to do it later. If, if the soonest we can tell anybody that has any possibility that they're not going to have a job so that they can do what they need to do, I think that's really important.
Trusty Dupree and then trustee Muhammad.
I can understand how it would seem that way. I'm, I'm not going to sit here and say that I don't. I can definitely see that it feels like we're just pushing it off because we don't really want to do this and I don't really want to do this. I mean, just to be honest, you know, I don't want to have to be the one that makes it so it's hard for somebody to pay a bill or, you know, cover things in their household or have to get up and move or take their kids out of the district. No, it's, it's not something we want to do. With that being said, we have clearly heard people say that they haven't even had any input on this. So whether it's a couple of weeks, a few weeks, it's just giving folks time to at least have some say, some input on what we're doing. We have to do the 90 days. We have no choice but to do that. We have to do it. So, yeah, and even then, we said that that was opening a door. We didn't say that we were definitely laying people off within that 90-day period. They just said we have to notify them that there's a possibility they would be laid off. So, I mean, like I said, I understand what you're saying and I'm not going to sit up here and dismiss it and I know what it sounds like, but really it's, folks have just said, like, we just want to have some input, so.
And my, my hope is that if we end up approving this resolution or some version of this resolution, that while Mr. Demetrio and Assistant Superintendent Parks make these reductions in the budget, they're able to find money elsewhere. And just because the notice went out, doesn't mean we have to lose that staff member. And so I'm hoping that they're, they are able to find money somewhere else so that we don't have to do this.
I think, go ahead.
Please, you and then trustee Ganna.
I think that is my concern is, you know, when you have, and if you, you give someone notice, I mean, they're going to start looking for jobs. So I mean, I'm trying to like delay, I mean, I'm not, and, and I just want to clarify the reason why I would make it, would say like, let's have some input before making the decision. It's not at all because I don't want to make a, I mean, we have, we're, we have to make that decision. Oh, no.
That's the switch.
But it's really because I wanted, as you just said, President Feaster, I want to see what alternatives we have. I want to see like, are there looking at, again, I'm not going to provide suggestions because then people are going to think that's, that's the plan. But I just, we need to look at alternatives, we need to look at input before making this crucial decision. And I don't, like, I understand, and I know Ms. Parks, you're gonna, you know, you're, this is not an easy decision and you're not going to be like handing off, you know, pink slips to random people. You know, you're gonna, it's going to be very thoughtful and very, but informed by input. But again, if, I would rather wait, get the input, get the alternatives, you know, options before we hand out pink slips.
And I guess to that point, just because we have the alternatives, they're still going to have to actualize those alternatives and it won't be done at that time period. So a, a number of pink slips will still have to go out while they figure, while they actualize whatever plan they're creating. So it really doesn't change the situation, it just pushes back the date, is how I, how I'm hearing it. Trusty Schmidt.
Because as I understand it.
I'm sorry.
And it's.
I forgot.
Oh, sorry.
I can wait.
As I understand it, when, when you receive a pink slip, it means you could be affected. And I know it's not a perfect system, but it's, it's the way the contract reads. So anybody that could be touched, so that there's then the whole figuring it all out part, right? But not everybody necessarily is, you know, but that's the way contracts are put into position so that anybody that has any chance, they, they let those people know.
While they work the plan.
While they work the plan, yeah.
Trustee, I'm sorry, did you have something, Assistant Superintendent?
I just wanted to jump in to say you absolutely could do it that way. Or, but the, the layoff notices that would go out do say you are laid off and then here's what recall looks like. So I just wanted to be.
Thank you.
Clear on that.
Okay. Trusty Ganna.
While you have the microphone, because my understanding, or my hypothesis is that, yeah, we would give notice and many more notices than we'd have layoffs, but we're, we're going to try to fine tune it better than massive. But I mean, what we call, what we call who we can, do you have any sense of, and you probably don't, what the margin would be of layoff notices versus recalls? That's a unfair question.
Yeah.
I'll withdraw it. I'll withdraw that. Can, is this picking up on my microphone? Okay, my turn? We only got notice of the budget shortfall going from what we thought was 6%, 19 million to 2%, 6 million, what, two weeks ago, in the last two weeks. And for the public, it's less than that. That's really quick. It's really a shock. It hasn't given us time to process it and think through. In, in that sense, I'm worried about, I mean, I think having more time to get information to deliberate is better if it doesn't negatively affect, you know, and it seems like we, the administration can handle that. The resolution, while it opens the door, gives the administration total authority. We, we give up our control over who gets laid off, how many. We're saying we trust you to make those decisions and that might be what we need to do. But I don't, I don't want people to understand it any differently. So it's, it's a real serious vote. Given the magnitude of the amount of money we need to cut, I don't want any staff to feel that there's other things that could be cut that doesn't affect frontline staff. I just, I don't know what it would be, I don't know how much. That's not our desire, but you, you guys are here, you know that, that that's the reality as well. I, I have talked to Ms. Parks and full faith effort to limit that. There's just a lot here, but I would, I would support the motion to put off the full decision on this.
So do, one question for Ms. Ozenski. There's a motion on the floor to, to amend the resolution to only include the ASCSA group. Do we need to do anything on the word document to, to accomplish that?
I've actually put a, a draft motion in to reflect the ASCSA bargaining unit only. But the resolution would need to be adjusted and we could do that. And it looks like Ms. Langford.
Can I just add one more thing? It won't impact what you're doing right now, but I neglected two groups.
Okay.
Just thinking, because I was asked on the spot. Ask Me TSP, which are our tech people. It's a 60-day, I believe. Don't quote me on that one. And then for all of the non-bargained, all of us, I believe it's also a 60-day in our contract. But I just need to, they're individual contracts. I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that all, all staff are, it could be impacted and I didn't want to miss anyone.
That 60 days would be when?
April, I'm sorry, May 1st. So, yeah, April 30th, May 1st.
Okay. Trustee Basket and trustee Dupree.
I'm sorry, I think trustee Dupree was first.
Trustee Dupree and then trustee Basket.
I just had like another question as far as the plan that we have to submit. Like how does the plan look? Could we put that staggered approach in the plan and still meet the requirements? Like if we said we're notifying, you know, this group in 90 days and next group in 60, because you all have contract obligations to 60 days as well? Could you write that in the plan and it still, you know, be what we need to, you know, satisfy the state?
I, I would think not because it wouldn't be approved by the board. What am I incorrect?
And to be honest, I, I don't know. But I would think that if we put something in the plan and we're not able to execute it or it gets denied, then I don't think it's going to look very good. I, I think when we submit a plan, we need to make sure that everybody's on board, everybody agrees with it, and then that we're going to go forward and execute it.
Right, so that, I guess that's what I was confused about. Because say if the plan says by the end of the school year, we plan to lay off X amount of people, which will equal this amount and, you know, savings and so on. But this is the way we plan on doing it. We plan to do it 90 days and 60 days. You see what I'm saying? So it's still saying that we would lay off a certain number of people. And then we've already said that the resolution is not saying that we're definitely going to lay people off. We're just kind of letting people know all of it, you know? And again, this is just how I'm thinking about it. What it would do is clarify that, you know, we're doing what we have to do mandatory for this group. And then we're still giving that time for, you know, the teachers and other groups that want to speak to us and provide their input for that next step. We're still giving that while.
So when is the decision going to be made? It's going to be before we have to submit a plan by April 15th. What I'm saying is that the decisions need to be made before April 15th.
Roger. So that would.
In order for us to be able to submit a plan that is a viable plan.
Roger, so that would be like that April 3rd meeting that we're talking about, right? Or would that not be?
It could be April 3rd or April 10th. But we also need time to get the financial plan together based on some of the content that we get back from our community.
So probably April 10th would be better than April 3rd.
So that would still give the 60-day requirement. It would give folks time to provide input. It would give you enough notification that if you want to be able to look for, you know, employment elsewhere or prepare to relocate, or would that be enough time to do all that?
I think if we, if on April 10th we decide what the plan is, then we can submit it on April 15th. And I don't think if we decide on a plan, we should wait for 60 days or, or some people are, you know, the day, the day the school year ends.
Well, no, not to, not, no, I wouldn't suggest that either.
So I think once we make the decision, in my opinion, then we should let people know as soon as possible.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, like, would that soon as possible? Would April 3rd or April 10th suffice as soon as possible? Or is that still too late?
I think if we make the decision on April 10th, it would suffice. But the decisions need to be made, right?
Trustee Basket and trustee Muhammad.
This is a little bit astray of this thread, if you will. But sometime this evening, Ms. Parks, if you would clarify the process of the layoffs in terms of, the board does not get to decide who is laid off.
Correct.
We give authorization to you.
Correct.
You work with your staff to determine those positions. So could you just reemphasize that? Because again, I'm not expected to see a list and say, I want one of those, two of these and three of those.
Right, you're right. So the board simply gives us the authorization to issue the layoffs and then we determine based on the recommendations that we will make to get to the $25 million, we will determine what those positions are. So you're absolutely correct.
So again, we're not giving up control. We have no control. That is within your realm of work.
Correct.
Thank you.
Trusty Muhammad.
So I'm assuming whatever meeting it is, April 3rd or April, I think 10th or 11th, we would still have, I mean, you would have a plan already read, like, kind of hopefully ready for us to look at and discuss. It's just how much time you would need, because you have to submit it by April 15th.
Do you mean the financial plan?
Yes, the financial plan. The fight, right, because we have to, I mean, I'm assuming we need to look at the plan. But I know it's something that you'd have to submit. So it depends on what, how much time you need. But I did want to stress, I mean, it's not, the point is not for us to, I mean, to be clear and you've already clarified, it's not for us to look at a list of people and be like this and this. No, that's not in our, not in our lane, you know? So it's not in our authority, but it's just to get an idea of like, just generally like, okay, well, general numbers and, and where this is coming from, not necessarily specifics.
So respectfully, I have a question. I, I guess I'm not understanding what you're hoping to see in a plan. Like, my understanding is the plan is to reduce 25 million. What are you hoping to see? Like, we're going to take two. Like, we're going to take 2 million from this program, and 2 million from this program, and from this building? Is that what you're hoping to see?
No. So it's primarily just getting buckets. I mean, I guess, can you explain, maybe we just understand what this financial plan is? Because, I mean, what is in, because what my understanding is, it would outline at least just general areas. So how much is coming from, like, the buckets, programming? How much is coming from, I don't know, I'm just making this stuff up.
My, unless you want to go. But my understanding is that
Yeah.
is that the plan is going to be to reduce 25 million per superintendent's recommendation. And if they're able to actualize other savings down the road, such as by reducing a program, or changing the building structure, or something of that nature, that will be done at a later time. There's not going to be anything different between now and the 3rd or the 10th. It's going to still be 25 million with these notices. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
And just to clarify, I understand that, but I think I would want to see something a little bit more detailed. I mean, when I said programming, I'm not, I'm not saying, the reason I'm saying I'm making this up is because programming is an area that keeps coming up, but that does not mean that that's what we're cutting. So I just wanted to make that clear. So that's just an example. But just trying to figure out, like, just so that I can feel, you know, just to have that information to see, like, where is this money going to be cut, that 25 million?
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's not going to change the request?
Correct. And we may not, by April 3rd, we may not know entirely
That's what I'm
where it's going to come from.
So it's going to be the same?
The amount will be the same.
Okay.
The amounts will be the same.
So the same number of notices will likely have to go out regardless?
Well, so whatever that number is, which we don't know.
But that's not changing. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, so the goal will be to get to the 25 million. I don't know how many notices will be required to get to that 25 million.
And that will be the same today, the 3rd, or the 10th?
Correct.
So you
Trusty Dupree?
So you won't actually, so we have to send out notifications, because we have to, by 90 days, we're one group. But you won't actually know how many people are going to be laid off or affected by this until when?
Until we have the full set of recommendations that get to the $25 million. And so until we have the specifics of what those recommendations will entail, which we will determine based on the feedback and input that we get from our community.
And the full set of recommendations won't be available until after the deadline we have to meet for this thing?
So that is actually to be determined based on whatever you all determine.
I think that's a Trusty Gainer's hand, and then back to Trusty Muhammad?
We were discussing my 20, my uninformed 20 million versus Mr. Demetrius's 25 million. And you showed us, a couple of us a spreadsheet. Would that be something you could present at a board meeting so everybody understands the numbers at some point?
Sure, definitely.
Yes.
Definitely think that would be helpful.
Because I think that is the question that our staff has, is can this be done slower? And if so, you know, why or why not? And so to show them what you've shown some of us might help to make it make more sense for everybody.
Definitely, yeah. I would be more than glad to show it.
Okay.
Whenever the board is ready to see it.
Trusty Care Harrow?
I'd like to call a question on the motion to amend.
All right, there was support by Trusty Dupree. I'm sorry, well, you're calling the question out, just calling the question, so we got to do that first, and then, okay. There's support on the question. Yeah. Trusty Gainer supported calling the question. So then Ms. Ozenski, please.
Trusty Dupree?
Yes.
Trusty Gainer?
Yes.
Trusty Schmidt?
No.
Trusty Muhammad?
Yes.
Trusty Basket?
Yes.
Trusty Care Harrow?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
So the question is, the Ann Arbor Public Schools Board of Education authorizes and delegates power to the superintendent, and as deemed appropriate by the superintendent district administration, to send a notice of layoff to those in the ASCSA bargaining unit in accordance with board policies and administrative regulations, including Board Policy 4830 and Administrative Regulation 4830.R.O.1, and relevant provisions of the collective bargaining agreement in order to address the budget shortfall that was moved by Trusty Care Harrow and supported by Trusty Dupree.
Correct.
Ready to vote.
Dupree is the person who supported Trusty Care Harrow motion originally.
Right.
Trusty Dupree?
Yes.
Trusty Gainer?
Sorry, was there a discussion?
Okay, I thought we already voted on it.
Uh, yes. Trusty Schmidt?
No.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
Correction, I believe we called the question on the amendment to the motion, but we not have, still have continued discussion on the actual amendment unless we are stating we're stopping discussion.
Oh, right.
Thank you for the point of clarification, Trusty Care Harrow.
We called the question on the motion to amend. We did not call to question quite on the motion to approve.
Okay, misunderstood, I apologize. Okay, so more discussion then?
The only motion I have on the table is that amended motion.
I understand.
So in my opinion, we are now voting on that motion, if you called the question.
Why?
Right, right.
Hold on, bring our parliamentarian in on this.
No, I think there should be an opportunity to have the discussion once we have decided to move forward.
Okay.
Again, to have the discussion, if there is discussion.
Okay.
Okay, because people need to, or should have the opportunity to state where they're voting on the resolution.
Based on our parliamentarian's opinion and Trusty Care Harrow who offered the motion, I think we should have continued discussion. So what additional discussion might we have?
So I'll go first, if I may?
Trusty Basket, please.
Thank you. I am thinking there is too much confusion about this. Trustees, we get the information on board docs in advance of the meeting. And if we had the suggestions or questions, we should have posed them before tonight. So I think that's part of the problem, or challenge, I guess I should say. I am concerned by the confusion of really what we're trying to accomplish besides a delay of layoffs, but we have acknowledged that staff will have to be laid off. I am concerned about putting pressure on the staff, giving the staff fewer days to work on this. I mean, we know spring break is next week, but I am sure that the staff will be working on this as required. It is not easy to put together anything for the state or any municipal body, having gone through that. So I don't know all the steps that Mr. Demetrius has to take, but again, I want to be cognizant of the fact, he probably needs more days than we are thinking. So I will not be supporting the motion, not that I don't love our staff and don't want to acknowledge the dire needs, but we are going to have to lay off staff. And so I would rather give the superintendent administration that permission, that authorization, to do as it deems appropriate. Thank you.
Given the fact that I just said that I believe Superintendent Parks can do this with a scalpel, and she can do it thoroughly, and I have faith in her, it would be inappropriate for me to now say that I want to not give her the power to do that? So I guess I am being consistent. I believe she has the best interest of our staff at heart. I believe she knows what they need, and I believe she will do what is, I believe she will do what is best for the district. And so I guess I'm supporting her, giving her that power to move forward. And so I guess that's where I land on it. Trusty Schmidt?
I also know that she has already shared with us this evening how she intends to incorporate input. I know you've already started going to schools this week. You'll continue to meet with administrators and staff and bring in the suggestions through the, it's a survey tool and the meetings that you're going to have that are in the public. I think we need to get started on the process, and the more time you have, I'm hoping the better the product.
And I'm getting, just following up, just to be absolutely clear to what Trusty Muhammad was asking, we're still going to be dealing with the same 25 million, whether we do it today, do it today, next week, or in the future?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent.
To clarify, to clarify, it's the 25 million is the 25 million. We have never said that all of that, we want to be in staff. So the answer to your question is yes, the 25 million is the 25 million. I don't know how much of that 25 million will be positions.
And that's not going to change between, okay.
Right.
Trusty Muhammad?
And just to clarify, I know I kept saying plan, but I think what would be helpful is for us to hear recommendations. I think that's what I meant, is recommendations coming from you, Ms. Parks, versus, and not specifics. Obviously, you're not going to give us a, you have to be very sensitive on how you make those recommendations, but how to deliver it in a way where it's not, you know, does not, is general enough, but not too specific. And we can talk, I mean, I just, I think recommendations would help. I know I keep saying plan, but.
Trusty Care Harrow?
I just want to make a clarification. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the amended motion, amended resolution? Excuse me.
According to Ms. Ozenski, that is the only motion on the floor to accept your amended motion to only allow layoff notices for ASCSA unit. And that was supported by Trusty Dupree.
Thank you, I'd like to call the question.
I know.
Okay, is there support for calling the question? Trusty Muhammad?
A support.
Okay, all right, then Ms. Ozenski, please.
And we're voting on calling the question again?
Apparently.
Interesting.
Calling the question, yes, which ends the, ends discussion on the motion on the table, for the amended motion, the amended.
Is there any discussion for a call to question?
No.
If you just ask for us to say why we support it or we don't, to call the question in the middle of that, it doesn't really give everybody the opportunity to speak, but we can go ahead.
Trusty Dupree?
No.
Trusty Gainer?
Yes.
Trusty Schmidt?
No.
Trusty Muhammad?
Yes.
Trusty Basket?
No.
Trusty Care Harrow?
Yes.
President Feaster?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you.
Continue the Congress, continue discussion.
So I just want to acknowledge what Trusty Basket said, I understand that we did get this information ahead of time, and that we could have crafted questions and so on before we got to the board meeting. With that being said, the input that we received at the board meeting was not input that we received when we got this information. So, you know, the idea of being able to separate things and do a more staggered approach, and honestly, and I apologize for this, it never popped into my head until I'm sitting in the room with the people who are greatly affected by this. And that's just me being honest. They said that it would not stop the planned conversations, meaning she'll still have the meetings with the community, still have the budget talks, still have the information to pull in. It will only give us time to get more input, which has been requested of us. It doesn't change the fact that, yeah, the 25 is the 25, that's not going to go away. It still gives us that amount of time to get input on things we can do and get more information. That's all I really wanted to say about that, so.
Any additional discussion, Trusty Schmidt?
So we had, did we have an original motion, and then it was amended, or are we back to the original motion?
The original motion was to amend the resolution to only send out notice to the ASCSA unit. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that is the only motion on the floor?
So I will move to accept the resolution as written.
Okay.
The, we already have the motion on the floor, we have to vote on.
We have to vote on the amendment, on the motion on the floor first, don't we?
We have to vote on Ernesto's resolution.
We already voted on the amendment.
Yes. Then now we're motioning to approve.
Yes, we just motioned to approve this.
There wasn't, let me clarify, there was, the only motion on the floor is the motion that Trusty Care Harrow made, which is the motion to amend the resolution that we have to only call for notice to go out to the ASCSA unit.
Which I read.
Yes.
Yes.
So there is no other motion on the floor, there was no motion that was amended, no friendly amendment, nothing else. That is the only motion on the floor.
Correct. And it didn't pass.
We did.
We're trying to vote on it now.
Wait a minute, let's back up a minute. We called to question, and then we voted, and then didn't we vote again on the amendment to accept it?
No.
We're doing it right now.
Okay, I'd like to call to question.
No, don't say that.
Don't say that.
Any more, any more discussion?
There's no more discussion.
I'm just not sure what other clarifications need to be made. We've just had to have it for an hour.
We don't, any more discussion?
No.
All right, then now we can vote on Trusty Care Harrow's motion that is on the floor, which is to which is, Ms. Ozenski, please?
Yes, I'm reading the motion that trustees are being asked to vote on now. The Ann Arbor Public Schools Board of Education authorizes and delegates power to the superintendent, and as deemed appropriate by the superintendent district administration, to send notice of layoff to those in the ASCSA bargaining unit in accordance with board policies and administrative regulations, including Board Policy 4830 and Administrative Regulation 4830.R.O.1, and relevant provisions of the collective bargaining agreement in order to address the budget shortfall. And we are voting now.
I'm sorry, Attorney Combs has a word to add.
Just add "and collective bargaining agreement" to that.
Provisions.
Of the board policies and regulations and
and relevant provisions of the collective bargaining agreement. Yes, that is in there.
Thank you.
And strike the last few words, is what you're saying.
In order to address the, so take that out.
Take out the admin regs, because this is a group. The admin regs and the board policy only applies to certificated staff.
Okay, gotcha.
The other groups have a collective bargaining agreement that have those deadlines in there.
In accordance with provisions of the collective bargaining agreement.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So now, Ms. Ozenski, may we have a roll call?
Trusty Dupree?
Yes.
Trusty Gainer?
Yes.
Trusty Schmidt?
No.
Trusty Muhammad?
Yes.
Trusty Basket?
No.
Trusty Care Harrow?
Yes.
President Feaster?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.